Actuary consultants we work with, with Gabriel Roder Smith. GRS is a very well-established firm in the actuary field. They do evaluations on police and fire, retirement system for the state of Arkansas, also teacher retirement, Arkansas public employees. So they're very well-qualified, and we're glad to have them as a partner. And I will turn it over to Danny.
Thank you again, I'm Danny White. Janie Shaw will be joining me, too. We've got a, it's a pleasure to be here, first time since COVID. You guys got a wonderful building here, and it's a pleasure to be here in front of you guys. What we've got is a 20, a January 1, 2022 actuarial evaluation that we've got a handout or a slide. There's also a detailed report that's back behind there, or, you know, we can provide this, the city has, that they can provide. And with that, we've got just a presentation, just a high-level summary of what the plan is, the finances, and then Janie will talk about some forward-looking projection information. You know, it's, I'm kind of going over where you're at today, what's happened since the last vow, and then Janie will look at a lot of forward-looking information. If we talk about pension plan summary of, you know, let's talk about the benefits that's provided, who's in it, it's all full-time, non-uniform employees. In terms of the benefit provided, we're talking about new hires, then, and this extends all the way back to anybody hired on or after May 1, 2018. The benefit is equal to 2% of final average pay. Final average pay is a 60-month average, a five-year average, times their year of service. Terms of retirement eligibility, 65 is six years, you need six years to be vested. There's also a chance to retire earlier if you have 20 years of service at age 62, or at 28 years regardless of service. There was a lot of thought, in 2017, 18, there was a lot of thought that went into this to find a benefit that remained adequate and competitive compared to, let's say, other plans, other cities. And then the last item is on contribution effort, so the city pays 10% of payroll, plus sort of dedication of property tax proceeds, you'll see that amount in the next slide. And then the members for the new hires coming in at, on and after May 1, 2018, is 10% of pay. It's a group of grandfather people that contribute 6% of pay. So again, that was part of the design that was thought out in 2017 and 18 when it came into effect of, what did it need on the funding side to get to an achievable goal at that Valuation results, so you think of the actuarially accrued liability, and so what we do is we take the employee data, retiree data, people who are no longer employees but entitled to future benefit, we calculate what that future benefit entitlement is. You know, we factor in assumptions like mortality, termination, retirement, salary increases. We do that for each individual participant, and then we sum it up, and that's our actuarially accrued liability. So it is based on employee data and all as of that date. Plan assets are provided by the trustee, and then the difference between the two is thought of as your unfunded liability, that difference that you need to make up over time, funded ratio, how much assets do you have compared to that liability, 38%. The last two items, I'll just note kind of for completeness, that you have the financial accounting information, this, what shows up on the city's financials. So you say, that line expense, that's your pension cost or accounting cost, it's not a funding, a funding number, but an accounting number, and that's 3.5 million. And then the last one, the net pension liability, this actually goes on the balance sheet for the city, and that's 45.6 million. So it's, it's there as a liability amount, and, you know, the reason we point that out and make that note is, at some point, it could either increase your cost of borrowing or limit your ability to borrow sometime in the future, because it is, it is considered a debt by, by, you know, creditors. Let's go over demographic result, our demographic information. So we have 266 employees that are members in plan, 131 retirees and beneficiaries, and then 17 members who, these are former employees, but they've not yet earned the eligibility to start their benefit yet, they've not reached that retirement age. Covered payroll for the group is about 11.5 million. Where this is important is this is your source of revenue for, for the retirement plan to collect contributions, you're paying contributions as a percentage of payroll, so we note the payroll. Down below, you look at the external cash flow for the plan, so this is money coming in from contributions, money going out in terms of benefit payments, you've got the various sources, employer contributions, 1.3 million, property tax proceeds are coming in of 0.5, 500,000, and then you have member contributions of 844,000. And so you compare that to actual benefits being distributed during that same time period, the last fiscal year, it was 2.4 million. So it's, you're in a more stable position because you have, you're more of a neutral cash flow, and the last two years of the investment earnings certainly did help. You know, you experienced 1.8 million more in assets than what was expected compared to the return assumption. See, for FY '17, you earned 17%, and then this last year, you earned 10%. But everything that's happened since this snapshot date, especially with regard to the investment performance, has not been positive. You know, I don't know what the numbers are, but, in other words, when we come back and we do this every two years, and when you come back and look at it in 2024, it a lot, you know, there's just going to be a lot of variability just been on, on investment performance. You know, you're, you're just asset-dependent. And then Janie will show that going forward here. Before I turn it over to Janie, are there any questions? Maybe more later.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Will you go back to page three on that expense number?
Yes.
Could you explain that a little more, that 3.5 million?
Yes, it's an accounting cost number, and I think the simplest way, when you look at it on, on the, on the slide, it doesn't, the math doesn't exactly work, but the way the intention of is, is it's going to be the difference, the change in your net pension liability from year to year, and then they, in governmental accounting, they call them deferred inflows, outflows, they're like prior service cost basis or unrecognized gain-loss. There's some, there's some things to kind of smooth that out, but think of it as, the simplest way to think of it is, that's your change in the net pension liability from last year to this year. It's just the, I'm sorry, the, the new accounting standards, the balance sheets become the most important statement, and the income statement comes up secondary.
Thanks, Danny. So I'm actually going to stay on this slide for a second. I want to point something out to you before we start looking at projections going forward. We had a great two years as far as investment performance, I believe in the last two years we had about a 10% or, and a 17% asset return, which when you compare that to our assumed return of 6.5%, you know, that's, that's a really great return. So our assets, what that kind of means in terms of our assets, that's about 1.9 million more in assets than we were expecting, so that's quite a bit. That's more than, you know, a year of employer contributions. But if you look at the slide right here, you see that our unfunded liability, that 27 million still went up since the last time we did evaluation. So if we look at that going forward... So these are your liability numbers and your asset numbers projected out over the next 30 years. So your liability numbers, those are your numbers in red right up there, so when we compare that to your liability numbers projected from the 2020 valuation, as opposed to this past valuation in 2022, those numbers are pretty much the same, they're very, very close, and those liability numbers continue to go up. And we expect that in an open plan like yours, so, you know, you have current employees that are still earning benefits, they're getting a year of service each year, and we also have new employees that are going to come into the plan each year, so we expect that liability number to go up each year. But what's important is that your assets go up along with it. So if we look at your assets in the 2020 valuation, that's that solid green line versus your assets in the 2022 valuation, we look a lot better. We had that great 1.9 million investment gain versus, so that's, again, that's 1.9 million more assets than we were expecting. If we project that out over the next 30 years, you know, assuming that 6.5% return, return, we look at about, you know, 50 million in assets versus 70 million in assets, so that compound interest really makes a difference. So you can see, you know, we're closing the gap a little bit more from your, that gap between your assets and your liability, but we're not closing it quite a bit. That unfunded liability is still growing a little bit as we go through. So if we start again from that, so that solid green line, that's our baseline, so that's still, that's our 2022 valuation, so we've taken the 2020 valuation off the graph here. So we know our investment return, it's inherent, inherently volatile. So we look at, like Danny said, you know, we've all seen the news, you know, investment performance isn't as good in this year versus what we've seen in the last two years. So we kind of saw, we kind of looked at this, you know, what if we have two really bad years before we come back to you guys and do the next valuation? So we said, what if we get a negative 10% return in 2022, 2023? We're not saying that's what you guys are going to earn, we're just showing you kind of a sensitivity about what that looks like. And you can see that line is kind of back to where we saw on the 2020 valuations, it's actually a little bit worse. So that just kind of shows you the inherent volatility of our investment performance, and, you know, how things can shift from year to year because of it. So the important things to look at here is, you know, the one, the point is, is even with, you know, our 6.5% return with where we are today, that solid green line, we've still got that unfunded liability growing a little bit. We're not really closing that gap between, you know, that red line and that green line, that gap between our assets and liability, we're not really closing that. And that's also to consider, you know, the inherent volatility of our investment. So the question is, how do we close that gap? And the way to protect us against that is, you know, additional city contributions. We looked at what would, you know, different city rates look like for your plan. So again, we have a 10% city rate right now, so again, that's that solid green line, that's the line we were just looking at on that previous graph. So we looked at a 12% city rate and a 14% city rate. So if we get those additional contributions into the fund, if you think about that, I believe we have about like 11.5 million in payroll right now, so that's about 115,000 in annual cost for each 1% increase in your city contribution. So if we look at, you know, a 14% city rate, that really, that's, right now is projected to close your gap in the next 30 years, so that gets your liability up to your, that gets your asset amount up to your liability. So that would get us, you know, to what we call 100% funded in about 30 years. So I, again, you guys had a really great year, you know, that asset gain was really helpful, but really, what we need to improve, to continue improving the benefit security of the plan, is really additional contributions to the fund. So our current recommendation would be to increase the city, the contribution rate to 14% of pay. But that's all I have, unless anyone has questions, discussion?
So we're looking at 460,000 more a year.
Yes, based on current payroll, yeah. And we, we go to the city, we're coming to you guys mentioning this funding strategy because that's, it's kind of how your funding policy is right now, you're making contributions, you know, payroll-based contributions. That doesn't necessarily have to be the case. If you want to just line item budget for, you know, 400,000, 460,000, or a dollar amount that's irregardless of payroll, that's, you know, that's workable, too. The end result is, we'd like to see more money in the plan. The plan needs more money.
But what would it be like if we, if we increased it like a percent each year for the next four years with that?
And absolutely, that, for, for the grand scheme of things, it, that'll work, too. You know, it's, because we're talking about a funding year, a 30-year projected number, it's going to change a lot, you know, you know, we're going to come in two years later, you're going to see the assets are probably less than, you know, we're not going to likely come in with the same positive news, but absolutely, you know, city budgets are always tight, you know, and that's, that's true across the board, every city. And so you do have, you've got flexibility to build this in and look at it and take steps, and take steps each year, whether that is payroll-based, increasing the rate, or whether you're going to take line item appropriations and make appropriations, the tax levy, I think is, what was it, 4 tenths of a mil on the, on the tax proceeds? I think from city, it's all baked in city ordinance, but I think there was some room there. The one you're kind of limited on is, is your member rate is about 10% of pay, and that's, can be asking a lot for some, some employees, so...
Yeah, we've talked about that in, in the pension committee, and that, that would really impact the employees, and that we really wanted to look at other options. So one, I have one question. On page four, with the employer contributions, I know a year or two ago, we allocated interest off of our revi, our reserve account, thank you. Is that included in that?
It is. It is included in there. I forget the dollar amount, but that was something we saw new, and we asked...
Okay, because about 182,000, I believe it was?
Okay.
If that's correct.
And this is more for anybody watching, that this does not include police and fire, so that when we're looking at, at the impact, and that's what I was sitting here thinking about, the impact on our different funds, sanitation, and the airport, and street, and the general fund, because police and fire wouldn't be part of that, we have, I'm just thinking of the impact on those, because I know we had talked about, and they've kind of referred to it as an additional line item in the budget, looking at the end of the year and saying, okay, we've, we've got a good net income, we've got a good fund balance, let's go ahead and send over, like, maybe when we're done paying back into the reserve fund, keep allocating that money and putting it there at the end of each year.
Or a portion of it, or...
Yeah.
A proportion of it.
Something to keep it, yeah.
Is this our last year, Tyler, paying on that, paying back our reserve, 250,000 annually?
I think we're getting close.
Pardon me?
I think 23.
23, okay.
One more. So that could be, but, but again, we could at the end of, you know, in March, look at it and say, how did we do last year? How did we end the year? And then do that allocation out of the fund balance.
Good idea.
Just so I'm clear about something, the city is contributing 1,311,860. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And your proposal would be to...
Prodate it by 460,000, if, if it was all absorbed immediately. You know, L.B.?
400,000 over 30 years.
But it would actually, think of it as an increase in the amount, because your, your city payroll is going to increase as well. You know, so we, it was labeled as a 4% of pay, 4% of pay right now is 460,000, but that, that dollar amount would increase over time, think of it growing at 3% a year, in your, your city payroll.
Now, as I look at your graphs that you've shown on page five, your estimated valuation of our fund in 2050 would be 65 million dollars, that's an estimate, looking at the graph, and your estimate on our liability is 110 million dollars, that's a 45 million dollar difference.
It is.
Even 400,000 a year over that period of time with a 10% return is not going to make that up.
No, it's not, and the, the part of it that's on the back end is, is your payroll spending. So it's 460 now, but it would be more later. Think of it as 4% of pay, you know, this year, that translates to 460,000, and as your, as your payroll for the employee group increases, because it does increase even with inflationary time, we're not factoring in the city growing, we're factoring the city staying, you know, where it's at now in terms of the workforce, but over time, your, your payroll will increase. We, we, we bet it will. We assume it will.
Just, just as a point of reference, when we were talking about the investments, I just got the email, and our current investments are just under 14 million, so that shows you the difference between, I mean, we were thrilled, and then we weren't, so...
It's probably less than after today.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, today there was another, yeah.
The 115,000 annual cost, I'm assuming that is not 100% general fund. Some of that would be sanitation fund, some would be street fund.
Airport.
I imagine probably quite a bit of it. The general fund is mostly a lot of uniform.
Right, so that takes that...
So I would imagine a lot of that 115 comes out of those other funds, which makes it easier to the general fund.
Street and sanitation.
To do something. So it might be worthwhile to, a combination, Shelley, you've kind of nailed it, look each year to see what surpluses we might have had, like this year, to use the track, we'll have something. Do that annually, but also maybe ratchet it up to 11%, and then, you know, a couple years later to 12, just kind of take it in bites, but also do what you said. Now, the other point, though, I guess you, you know, the higher funded, the higher the funded ratio is, the better, but it doesn't have to be 100% by any means.
Yeah.
I mean, 99.9% of the funds, pension funds in America are nowhere near 100% if any. So it doesn't have to be at 100%. Now, it's the goal to strive to, needs to be more than we've got, but you don't have to be at 100%.
We're covering it now.
Covering your annual expenses and then adding to it is really the key.
Yep.
Just going to add one, one comment to that point, and that is, I think, if you think of it as simple terms of, of, build one other component in there, is if you're, you're paying those contributions and actually paying down some of the principal on that unfunded liability, where you expect a dollar amount of that unfunded liability to go down each year. That's, you're, you're not in there yet, but that, that would start moving you in the right direction for that.
Did I understand you to say that we've looked at this closely every two years?
Do a full snapshot every two years, but for accounting purposes on your financial statements, you take an update of your assets every, every single year, every December 31st.
We need the market to go back by December 31st.
Any other questions? Thank you, too, for your time.
Very good info, thank you.
Counsel, it is 5:54, I'll see everybody back here at 6:30.
6:30.
Glad to see you all tonight. We proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer and the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please feel free to join us. Ms. Isby, can I ask you to complete her prayer, please?
If you'll bow with me. Our gracious Father, we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful city that you've blessed us with, and we just ask, Lord, that everything that we do is pleasing in your sight, and we just pray that at the end you give the glory that you're so deserving of. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Garrett, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
You should have received copies of the August 23 city council meeting. Any corrections, changes, or comments?
Make a motion for approval if submitted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minute said submitted. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Passes eight to zero. First up, we have the Economic Development Committee, and we will start with a resolution accepting the donation of a utility easement for Stevens Real Estate Investments for Conway Corporation. Charles Finkenbiner can speak to this, or Mr. Mark Ferguson. Mark, would you come on up? Did you let Brett put this off on you tonight?
He was previously indisposed.
Would you explain to us, please, what this is?
This is the easement in relation to the Chestnut Street improvements. We are needing to relocate and upgrade some utilities along that corridor ahead of the street department's work, and so we are seeking an easement from this property owner to relocate utilities on.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to grant this resolution from Stevens to Conway Corporation. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Resolution R. 2243. All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Passes eight to zero. Next, we have a resolution approving a new water source for Faulkner and Conway County for Conway Corporation. Says Brett, Carol, and Greg Dale, I wouldn't take that if I were you. Mark, would you explain this to us, please?
All right, so we are seeking support for a proposed lake to be located in Conway County. It's a joint partnership between Conway Corp. and Conway County Regional Water Distribution District. We currently both pull water out of Brewer Lake to serve our customers. That is a finite watershed, so eventually in the future, we're going to need more water supply, so this is a joint collaboration. The lake will be located on the east fork of Point Remove River, which is also in Conway County. At this time, we're just asking for support from the city. It's also going to the county court and court tonight for the same resolution. There's no obligation to spend money at this time if you are in support, but this just helps us get to that next step to seek grant funding.
Make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution for, look at the new water source for Faulkner and Conway County for Conway Corporation. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Resolution R. 2244. All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. We appreciate your support. Next up, we have community development. Mr. Hawkins, we'll turn this over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is an ordinance accepting federal funding, and this is for the CDBG program, and Shawana, good evening.
Good evening, hello, everyone.
Good morning, Shawana.
This, this ordinance is appropriating HUD funding for program year 2022 for CDBG in the amount of 481,835. We are still looking to do services for three of our nonprofits. We did originally have four, one of them withdrew their application, but we are still looking to work with them, and we still have been in communication with them and looking to work with them in the future as well. We are currently, our current project is overnight emergency shelter, which we are really excited about. We do have a roof on, and as you can see, the roof is on, and they're looking to start on the inside with the walls and insulation soon, so we are hoping we will open early spring 2023, and we are asking that you approve appropriation of funding.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Number, Mr. Garrett?
The ordinance, O. 22103. Thank you.
Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Shawana.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Shawana.
Thank you, Shawana.
Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating funds for the T-Hanger construction project for the Conway Airport, and Jake, good evening.
Good evening, how are y'all doing?
Good.
All right. Yes, this is just for our T-hangers, these were additional Fox Grove hangers that we built, I think we completed in the spring of this year. This is appropriating the 47,687 towards that to get that paid off.
Make a motion to waive three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance. The ordinance is 22104.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item is still out at the airport, Mr. Mayor, it's an ordinance appropriating funds to purchase aviation fuel for resale at the airport. That sounds like money to me.
It is. And that's our, our bread and butter out there is the resale fuel, and with prices going up, anytime you see it going up in the pump, it affects us as well. So we, we get a truck, now it's, seems like every other day, but, which is a good thing.
That's good.
But it's at least once a week, so every time that truck comes in, the price fluctuates, so probably as of now, we've sold more fuel, jet fuel than we did all of last year as
That's good.
But it's at least once a week, so every time that truck comes in, the, the price fluctuates, so probably as of now, we've sold more fuel, jet fuel than we did all of last year as of right now, so. And that's for a couple of different reasons, but that's where we make all of our money and our profit, so I'm going to take that consideration when we're building our budget now, and we're almost complete with that, so you'll see a big rise in fuel costs for next year, which is great, because, you know, we hope to continue that, and I'm making a couple different moves to, to make that, make sure we keep, have that coming in, so. But we do need to pay some of our bill for the fuel that we owe right now, and then for the carry us through the rest of the year to get us, make us successful, so.
I make a motion to waive three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance for the appropriation of five hundred thousand, and I have that as ordinance number one oh five.
And the emergency clause.
And the emergency clause, yes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to, a motion and a second to appropriate funds to purchase aviation fuel at Conway Regional Airport, it's Conway Regional, Communisiple Airport, with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
The mercy clause, Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Those both pass eight to zero. Keep up the good work out there, Jake.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir.
Next up, we have public safety, and we have our police chief here with us, with an ordinance appropriating reimbursement fund for fuel for Conway Police Department. Burning a little bit of gas, are we, chief?
We are. I'm sure it's no surprise to anybody that we have gone through our fuel budget this year. We've just about depleted it, we've got about one month of reserve left. We've, we've estimated that it'll take us about another hundred thousand, another hundred thousand dollars to get through the rest of the year, so we're asking for that money.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
The ordinance O twenty-two one hundred and six. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, chief. If you and Chief Tapley would hang around for just a second. Counsel, the next one is a resolution approving the reallocation of funds for the Conway Fire Department. All of you are very aware of this, how this works. In two thousand and six, bond issues, bond issue monies financed the building of a new police building and furnishings, as well as the purchase of two engines and one ladder truck for the Fire Department. In two thousand and eleven, the council passed an ordinance committing five hundred thousand dollars annually to the Conway Police Department for the purchase of vehicles, and in two thousand and eighteen, the council passed an ordinance giving PD four hundred thousand annually, dropping in a hundred thousand for cars, and then a hundred thousand went to the Fire Department, and they bought an apparatus, remember, we put it on the five year payment plan, and, and we actually recently paid that off with some of our rescue funds. After visiting with both chiefs, and Chief Tapley was very, very good to work with us on this, he has agreed that due to the Fire Department needing some new apparatus at this time to split that fifty-fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for police cars and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of fire trucks. Chief Tapley, and he also agreed, and I would have to agree with him, should, and that should allow him to purchase four cars, he's in pretty decent shape right now, but it's very important that he continues rotating new cars in. So my agreement with him, if, if y'all will agree with it as well, is should he come to us and need more than four cars, then, then this council will, will look into that and see what we can do to help him. But at this time, that's what we're asking the council to do, is, is pass an ordinance to allow us to split that two hundred and fifty thousand, police, two hundred and fifty thousand, fire.
Make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the real allocation of funds for the Conway Fire Department. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
The resolution R twenty-two forty-five, all in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Chief Tapley.
We got to do the.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I see. And next up is an ordinance approving the purchase of a pumper and a rescue pump for the Conway Fire Department. Jamie, if you would come up too. And chief, I'll let you and Jamie answer the questions here, but y'all go ahead and kind of explain, there are several options here that the council has. One would be to buy these two trucks at one time, which would probably be in the neighborhood of one point seven million, but if you remember, we have about three point six million from the general fund that's going to go to station three here in the near future. The other option is a five-year purchase plan. The kicker to all this is, chief will tell you, we're probably looking at a thirty-six month delivery date on these trucks.
Wow.
Yeah, you can't. So there's two options. One is a five-year purchase plan at four point oh one percent. That would be roughly three hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars annually, less two hundred and fifty thousand, that's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand five left to come up with from the general fund. Mr. Whinningham said, said that's doable. The second option is, or third option, is a ten-year plan, which will be two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars over ten years. On a five-year, you'll end up paying a total of nine hundred and eight thousand dollars for an eight hundred and sixty-three, for an eight hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar truck, and nine hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for a nine hundred and twenty thousand dollar truck, less the price of our trade-ins, and on ten-year, we'll end up paying a million thirteen for a eight hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar truck at that time, or same price, or one million ninety-nine for the nine hundred and twenty thousand. So there is some, some interest paid on either of these loans, so it's up to this council to decide how they want to go about paying for this, or, or what you want to do.
Can they be paid off early possibly without a penalty? Either one of the loans?
Yes.
Did I explain that correctly, Jamie?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, why wouldn't we start putting money back now since it's going to take thirty-six months? We'd have sixty percent of it ready in three years.
I'll have to punt that to them.
So this company requires that we pay upfront. They will not allow us to do that. Once we put an order in, the money is due.
Wow.
Now, but until the trucks get here, they'll just ask us to pay the interest on the money?
We can do it in interest-only payment until we receive those trucks.
Till the trucks get here.
Finance through the manufacturer or your bank, bank financing?
Finance through PNC, which is not the manufacturer.
And I did call one local bank, started one, and they, they didn't feel like they could beat that rate.
That rate is what?
Four point oh one.
How long would you expect each of these trucks to last? What's the useful life? Ten years or less or more?
Fifteen, we're building them on a fifteen-year chassis now. Say that. The ones we're replacing are ninety-eight model.
I was going to say.
Wow.
There any other questions, or I have detail if you guys would like to see that?
I'm sorry.
Me too.
Yeah. I think, I think the recommendation, and y'all don't want me to speak for you, of Jamie and the chief would be the five-year option.
I always think what I would think.
Okay.
We decided, it's hard to let go of that money right now and then not receive anything for many, three years, so.
Yeah.
And I think that's what's built into the ordinance.
Yeah.
Folks aren't going out of business.
I don't think, not, not Pierce Manufacturing.
But they just said about Enron.
That's a good point. And, and Jamie can, before, Jamie can call the local banks, all of them. I would rather do local, to be honest.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, we'll shop it and be sure that that's, that's, that's the best.